Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pause before the start of this school board meeting to lift up our hearts to you in prayer and thanksgiving for all of the many mercies you have shown us. We seek your face as we prepare to make decisions for our students, teachers, and community. We pray that you will give each one of us present tonight your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength in all issues and areas that affect our students' lives. Keep us humble before your throne and give us the integrity to stand up for what we believe in. Into your hands we place this meeting, trusting you to lead and guide us tonight and to protect our students. To your praise and glory, amen.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Board Member Crowley and a second from Board Member Coon. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business is our student performance. Let's welcome the Ward Elementary Drum Group.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys alright? Okay, we're gonna wake everybody up. These amazing kids I've got with me are all students from Ward Elementary. They are all fourth and fifth graders. We've been doing this for just a few months now. We performed our first show the other day at Union Baptist Church. So you guys will help us get warmed up. We always do a bit of call and response. Will you help us with that?
Yes.
Okay, so all you have to do is do what I do, but do it on your legs. Okay? Don't hurt yourself. I'll play it, you play it back. And if you get lost, just follow them. That was pretty good. Alright, now, Mr. Jayon Kabone is gonna tell y'all a little bit about this one little quick song, but we're gonna... Jayon, come on up, tell me about it. Give it up for Jayon, guys.
Hello, we are the Ward Drumming Squad. Oh, my name is Jayon Kabone. The piece we will be performing for you today is called "Kuku." It comes from the Ma'nyan people of Guinea, West Africa. In former times, women would use this thing as a man would plant the river on the bank of the river. When they returned, the woman would ask the man to put his head on the ground and dance in his river.
Apparently, the mic's not on yet?
It's hit the volume button.
I think I know this. I'm not seeing it, buddy. You gotta trick the mic up here, Kevin. I see no button. Oh, good. Thank you. Alright, guys. Hey! Hey! Hey!
So I'm gonna say something really quickly. This is the principal of the school and drum director here, drum major. That was wonderful, and thank you, Principal Tribby. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, John Sullivan, Director of Athletics, will present our track and field state champions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Kaplan, members of the board, Ms. McManus, thanks for having us here this evening. We're here to recognize our winter state champions. We will start with our indoor track and field champions. And we'll start with Mount Tabor High School Girls 4x8-meter relay. Come on out, girls. Coached by Mike Riley, and the group contains Bronwyn Parks, Hannah Riley, Eliza Brand, and Katie McFerrin. Congratulations, girls. Next, we have the Mount Tabor 4x800-meter Boys Relay Champions. Come on out, gentlemen. And the boys are coached by Head Coach Patrick Cromwell, and the team consists of Connor Inman, Andrew Riley, Luke Armentraut, and Andrew Burrell. Congratulations. Next, we move on to the Parkland Girls. Come on out, girls. The Parkland Girls were the 4x200-meter Champions. They are coached by Antoine Hughes Senior, Terrish Alexander, and also accompanied by Principal Ms. Noel Keener. The group consists of Ontario Dubose, Zaya Etchison, Ayana Gray-Williams, and Megan Hatcher. Within that group, we also had a 500-meter individual champion, and that was Ms. Megan Hatcher. We also had a 300-meter individual champion, and that was Ayana Gray-Williams. Now, we will bring out the Parkland Boys. The Parkland Boys were also the 4x200-meter Champion Relay, and that group consists of Antoine Hughes Junior, Kobe Mack, Michael Walker, and Justin Powell. And they are coached by Antoine Hughes Senior. Next, from Reagan High School, Coach Kevin Shelf and Jonathan Koger. Jonathan was the Boys High Jump Champion. Next, from West Forsyth High School, coached by Nathan Newsome, is the Boys Long Jump Champion, also was the outdoor champ last year, Tyson Adams. Congratulations to all our champions indoor track and field. And next, we will bring out the North Carolina Cheer Coaches Association State Champ Cheerleading in the Middle School Division, the Meadowlark Middle School Cheerleading Team. And Coach Tekeetra Snow Speaks is going to read off the members of the team that are present with us.
Alright, first up, we have Kate Bush, Aubrey Dancy, Liz Marie Rivera, Maddie Deener, Emery Dupont, Reese Robertson, Aubrey Fulcher, Lily Shelton, Ariely Carlino, Chloe Brandon, Kalen Detroit, Hannah Kaneli, Amani Grace, Kalise Patterson, and Henna Tashipamba.
Next, we will recognize in the High School JV Division, the North Carolina Cheer Coaches Association State Champions from West Forsyth High School, West Forsyth Cheerleaders. And Coach Bobby Wilson will read the names of those who are present.
Amari Carter, Anya Benfield, Avery Geirde, Kara Berchem, Elise Montgomery, Emma Walton, Genevian Edwards, Hayden Perryman, Isabella Isaacs, Katherine Patterson, Kinsey Bullins, Neve Drake, Nina Boland, Quinn Hamblin, Sidney Frazier, Taylor McCoy, and Zoe Price.
Thank you, girls. Let's turn around and shake Board Members' hands, please, on your way out. Congratulations to all of our state champions.
Next, we will recognize in the High School JV Division, the North Carolina Cheer Coaches Association State Champions from West Forsyth High School, West Forsyth Cheerleaders.
And Coach Bobby Wilson will read the names of those who are present.
Amari Carter, Anya Benfield, Avery Geirde, Kara Berchem, Elise Montgomery, Emma Walton, Genevian Edwards, Hayden Perryman, Isabella Isaacs, Katherine Patterson, Kinsey Bullins, Neve Drake, Nina Boland, Quinn Hamblin, Sidney Frazier, Taylor McCoy, and Zoe Price.
Thank you, girls. Let's turn around and shake Board Members' hands, please, on your way out. Congratulations to all of our state champions.
Next, Dr. Paula Wilkins, Chief Academic Officer, will recognize our Reading Warrior Tutors.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
Members on the audience, it is with great excitement that I have an opportunity to recognize our Reading Warrior Tutors. So Reading Warrior Tutors are serving students in kindergarten and first grade that need a little additional help and support with learning to read, and we have over 60 tutors. Not all are here tonight, but I'd like to ask our Warrior Tutors to come on out. And these volunteers have given their time, their talents, and their energy to commit to our district to support our students in reading. So I'm gonna call names, and as I call you, as soon as we finish, I wanna make sure we shake all Members of the board's hands. Leah Crowley, Beth Hale, Terri Nelson, Lisa Sykes. And we also have one of our team members, all of our team couldn't help tonight, but it takes a team to support our volunteers. And so we have Kathy Fur, who just joined our team, who helps to support and coordinate our team. So thank you all for what you do in service of supporting our students to read. So thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you.
Next, Deborah Troxel, our West Forsyth Educator, will recognize our National Board Certified Teachers.
Hello, my name's Deborah Troxel. I teach social studies at West Forsyth as a full-time teacher, and I'm the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools National Board District Coordinator. It's a mouthful. Okay, so thank you. Thank you to Superintendent McManus, the school board, and guests for honoring our newly certified and renewed National Board Certified Teachers. There's a story of a dad who gives his recent college graduate a car. She takes the car to a used car lot, which offers $100, then to a pawn shop, which offers $1,000. Then she takes the Nissan Skyline R34 to a car club, which offers $100,000. The point of the story is to find the right place that knows your value. Recently, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Heather Barksdale, and the Teacher Academy have taken the initiative to increase support of National Board Candidates. In addition to the monthly support sessions we've been doing for years, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School now offers monthly small-group cohort sessions and has launched the Beginner to Board Program for BT3s to begin to explore accomplished teaching. I am so grateful to work in a school system that knows the value of experienced reflective teachers. The teachers here tonight have submitted a portfolio of work in which they have analyzed their work and their student work to prove their impact on student learning. We will now recognize the newly certified and renewed National Board Certified Teachers in attendance at the meeting tonight. Please come forward when I call your name. Tanya Allison. She's a music teacher at Ward Elementary. Jonathan Amis. He teaches social studies at Reagan High School. He's renewed. Samuel Ball. He's the magnet coordinator at Follow Middle. Michaela Bermudez. She's the fourth-grade dual immersion teacher at Spies Elementary. Claire Daniels. She's a second and third-grade teacher at the downtown school. Susan Darvel-Zook. She's the bass teacher at Wally Middle School. She's renewed. Wendy Epley. A Bolton Elementary Exceptional Needs Teacher, renewed. Cynthia Fries. An AG teacher at Jefferson Elementary, renewed. Laura Horn. She's a Glenn High School English teacher, renewed. Jenny Hewitt. She's a second-grade teacher at Louisville Elementary. Mary Hutchins. An AIG teacher at Royal Hall Elementary, renewed. Alicia Julian. She's a Wally Middle School math teacher. Now, we have Michelle Lewis. An Exceptional Needs Teacher at Cash Elementary, renewed. Megan Lilly. A kindergarten teacher at Sherwood Forest Elementary, renewed. Jessica Petrie. A fourth-grade teacher at Southwest Elementary. Amanda Reeves. She's a second-grade teacher at Union Cross Elementary. Now, Summer Raleigh. She's a kindergarten first-grade teacher at the downtown school. And our last here tonight is Frankie Santore. He's an ELO teacher at Clemens Middle. So thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Congratulations. 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 Your hand is cold. Congratulations. 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 Yeah, I appreciate you. Congratulations. 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 Yeah, I appreciate you. Congratulations. 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 Yeah, I appreciate you. Congratulations. 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 Okay.
Okay, next, our Superintendent, Tricia McManus, will present the Marketing and Communications NCSPRA Awards.
Thank you so much, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chairman Hannan, and Board Members. I'm very excited. I think we celebrated this last time we were here, but I wanted to give a special recognition to our communications team. So I'm gonna read a little bit to you about what this is about. The North Carolina School Public Relations Association has honored Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for excellence in communications. Our team earned a total of 33 Blue Ribbon Awards for outstanding and effective communication in a variety of categories. That is the most of any other district in the state, and they presented the awards during a special ceremony on February 10, 2023. Before I keep reading, I'm gonna have the team walk out so that they can stand here smiling at you while I'm reading this. Come on out, communications team! Alright, and now while they stand here looking at you as I finish, because I'm like, I should have brought them out, like all the students did and all the other people. So WSFCS received 33 Gold and Silver Bronze Level Awards in categories of electronic media, excellence in writing, graphic design, special events and programs, photography, and publications. The judges praised the work with comments including "clean," "effective," and "fantastic." They were also presented with the Best of the Best Award in Publications for the district's Code of Character, Conduct, and Support. And so basically, this is, I have firsthand experience, as if you go to our website, look at our videos, look at our newsletters, look at the multitude of products they produce, and I have firsthand knowledge of the fact that they can turn pretty much anything into a work of art. And they do that with me all the time. A work of art is what ends up coming from what this team does. So I would just want to congratulate them, the most awards in the state, 33. Congratulations to the best communications team in the state. Wendy Epley. A Bolton Elementary Exceptional Needs Teacher, renewed. Cynthia Fries. An AIG teacher at Jefferson Elementary, renewed. Laura Horn. She's a Glenn High School English Teacher, renewed. Jenny Hewitt. She's a 2nd grade teacher at Lewisville Elementary. Mary Hutchins. An AIG teacher at Royal Hall Elementary, renewed. Alicia Julian. She's a Wally Middle School Math Teacher. Now, we have Michelle Lewis. An Exceptional Needs Teacher at Cash Elementary, renewed. Megan Dooley. A kindergarten teacher at Sherwood Forest Elementary, renewed. Jessica Petrie. A 4th grade teacher at Southwest Elementary. Amanda Reeves. She's a 2nd grade teacher at Union Cross Elementary. Now, Summer Riley. She's a kindergarten 1st grade teacher at the Downtown School. And our last here tonight is Frankie Santore. He's an ELO teacher at Clemens Middle. So, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Congratulations. 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 Your hand is cold. Congratulations. 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 Yeah. Appreciate you. Congratulations. 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 Okay. She's doing the next one.
It's okay. You ready? Okay, next, our Superintendent Tricia McManus will present the Marketing and Communications NCSPRA Awards.
Thank you so much, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and Board Members. I'm very excited. I think we celebrated this last time we were here, but I wanted to give a special recognition to our communications team. So, I'm going to read a little bit to you about what this is about. The North Carolina School Public Relations Association has honored Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools for excellence in communications. Our team earned a total of 33 Blue Ribbon Awards for outstanding and effective communication in a variety of categories. That is the most of any other district in the state, and they presented the awards during a special ceremony on February 10, 2023. Before I keep reading, I'm going to have the team walk out so that they can stand here smiling at you while I'm reading this. Come on out, communications team! All right, and now while they stand here looking at you as I finish, because I'm like, I should have brought them out like all the students did and all the other people. So, WSFCS received 33 Gold and Silver Bronze Level Awards in categories of electronic media, excellence in writing, graphic design, special events and programs, photography, and publications. The judges praised the work with comments including "clean," "effective," and "fantastic." They were also presented with the Best of the Best Award in Publications for the District's Code of Character, Conduct, and Support. And so, basically, this is, I have firsthand experience, as if you go to our website, look at our videos, look at our newsletters, look at the multitude of products they produce, and I have firsthand knowledge of the fact that they can turn pretty much anything into a work of art. And they do that with me all the time. A work of art is what ends up coming from what this team does. So, I would just want to congratulate them, the most awards in the state, 33. Congratulations to the best communications team in the state. Thanks, guys.
Very, very well deserved. Next. You're here. You're here. So, next, Latrell Adams, our Director of Social and Emotional Learning, will present the Proclamation for Social Emotional Learning Day, which is March 10, 2023.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and Board Members, Superintendent McManus. I'm excited to be before you today to honor SEL Day and the wonderful team that I get to support every single day. This team monitors and supports the SEL implementation progress for assigned schools. They plan and design and lead ongoing presentations to improve understanding and implementation of SEL and restorative practices. Just today, they have supported and led presentations on the code, beginning teachers, as well as, gosh, what was the other one? The implementation of the code, beginning teachers, and ISS coordinators. They intentionally build relationships and collaborate with other departments to drive collaboration and ensure that SEL is integrated and implemented with success. They do this and so much more. They are kind, supportive, and some of my favorite people in model SEL every single day. At this time, I would like to recognize the wonderful SEL coaches that serve our district. Lindsay Hayek. She's a music educator and serves the West Area. She has 13 years in education. Ms. Alicia Oakes. She serves Inspire 340. Ms. Alicia Oakes. She has served our district for 32 years in the capacity of ELA, AIG, social studies, and even taught science during the quarantine. Samantha Massey. She serves the South Area. Samantha is a former English educator and has 11 years in education. Mr. Logan Makin. He serves the North Area. And is a former social studies educator of almost 10 years. And last but not least, Mr. Todd Rich. Todd is a former Ibest Team Member and math educator of 22 years. So, please give my amazing team a hand. SEL Day is an opportunity to collectively spread the word about the importance and impact of social emotional learning. Working together, we can continue to raise awareness for SEL, bring on new SEL stakeholders, and share the SEL best practices and so much more. And we would like to propose the following proclamation. The Fourth Annual International SEL Day is March 10, 2023, and we are so excited about it. Proclamation. Whereas, social emotional learning is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. Whereas, SEL competencies develop throughout our lives and are essential to success in our schools, workplaces, homes, and communities, and allow individuals to contribute meaningfully to society. Whereas, top companies are emphasizing the importance of social and emotional skills such as self-awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making for success in the next generation of employees and entrepreneurs. Whereas, results from a landmark meta-analysis shows that SEL interventions that address the five core competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, increased academic performance by 11 percentile points, improved students' ability to manage stress, and improved attitudes about self, others, and school. Whereas, research suggests that evidence-based SEL programs are more effective when they include strategies for family and community engagement. Whereas, cost-benefit research shows that for every dollar spent on SEL, there is an $11 return on investment. And whereas, research shows that investments in evidence-based SEL programs can lead to improved educational achievement and long-term benefits to society. Therefore, we are requesting that Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education proclaim the 2nd Friday in March as Social Emotional Learning Day in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and encourage all community members to learn about and share their knowledge of the importance and impact of integrating evidence-based SEL into our schools, organization, and community. Thank you.
Next, Sheila Thorpe, Director of Social Work, will present the Proclamation for National School Social Work Week, which is March 5 through March 11, 2023.
Good afternoon, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. We are here to celebrate our school social workers. Our school social workers are truly the link between the home, school, and the community. Our school social workers across the district spend countless hours supporting our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Many of them are a part of our crisis team, so they're there in the good times and they're there in the not-so-good times supporting our students. I would like to recognize Ms. Sheila Thorpe today. She's our Director of Social Work Services. And Robin Fisher, who you'll see in just a moment. She is the Lead School Social Worker for their leadership and their support of all of our school social workers across the district. So, Sheila, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for all that you do every day in student services.
Thank you. Chair Kaplan, Members of the Board, Superintendent McManus, meet some of our school's social workers. And this is Robin Fisher beside of me. And I'm going to present the Proclamation for National School Social Work Week, March 5 through 11, 2023, expressing support for the designation of the week beginning March 5, 2023, as School Social Work Week. Whereas, the importance of school social work through the inclusion of school social work programs and services has been recognized in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Whereas, school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to student success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, family stressors, and other barriers to learning. Whereas, school social workers are needed more now than at any time in recent memory as more students are struggling with mental health and behavioral health disorders, with nearly 1 in 6 children from ages 2 to 8 years old, 17.4% having a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder. Whereas, individuals who wish to access community mental health services often find such services unavailable, inaccessible, or inadequate. Whereas, school-based mental health programs are critical to early identification of and early intervention for mental health problems. Whereas, school social workers, being licensed mental health professionals in schools in the United States, provide necessary assessments, intervention, counseling, family outreach, and community referrals. Whereas, school mental health programs are critical to the early identification of mental health problems and the provision of appropriate services when needed. Whereas, school social workers maintain knowledge of school culture and school climate, which are necessary for responsible school safety planning. Whereas, fewer than 1 in 5 children in need of mental health services actually receive these services, and research indicates that school mental health programs improve educational outcomes by decreasing absences, dropout rates, and discipline referrals while improving academic achievement. Whereas, school social workers serve as vital members of the school's education team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between home, school, and community to ensure student academic success. And whereas, the celebration of School Social Work Week during the week beginning March 5, 2023, highlights the vital role school social workers play in the lives of students in the state of North Carolina. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education and Superintendent Tricia McManus do hereby proclaim March 5 through 11 as National School Social Work Week, adopted by the Board, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, this 28th day of February, 2023.
And last but not least is our Board Spotlight Video.
In February, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools celebrates Career and Technical Education, or CTE, Month. WSFCS has 145 high school and 13 middle school courses available in the CTE program. WSFCS is proud of the strong history and bright future that career and technical education has in our district. Also in February, we're proud to celebrate our 155 school counselors as part of National School Counseling Week. Thank you, school counselors, for everything that you do in support of our students. Love the Bus Month is also in February, and WSFCS is joining school districts across the nation in loving on our bus drivers. More than 400 members make up the WSFCS transportation team, and we are so proud of their continued commitment to transporting our students safely to and from school. The WSFCS Community Engagement Team is making connections that move, and the latest effort impacts 4th and 5th grade students at Cook Literacy Model School. The school kicked off a partnership with Winston-Salem State University on a 10-week mentoring program called Radical Academic Mentoring Service, or RAMS. Thanks to transportation provided by Union Baptist Church, WSSU students will come to Cook's campus for the next few months to meet with students, mentor, and form lasting relationships.
Everyone needs a mentor. Everybody has had a mentor in some form or fashion. And so, to give children this opportunity for someone to come in and just focus on them, it's a win-win.
A special reopening ceremony at John F. Kennedy High School this month as students and staff return to what feels like a brand-new school. The high school has been completely renovated for the first time in over 60 years, thanks to the 2016 bond referendum.
It's beautiful. The design's beautiful. The color schemes are beautiful. And I hope, students, that you all love learning in this new facility, that our teachers, that you love teaching in this new facility.
It's good to be back home in our own space, in our own classroom. That's being home. You know, you make the analogy, going away from home for a little while and coming back home. There's no place like home, so we're glad to be at home.
Clemens Elementary School had a visit this month from David Hagerman, the Science Wizard. Hagerman is a scientist and stage magician that lives in Branson, Missouri. And for the past 28 years, he's traveled all over the U.S. to give demonstrations of the scientific principles behind his magic tricks. He has performed for over a million students and has even been featured on the hit TV show America's Got Talent. His goal is simple, to create more scientists.
Seeing the kids' faces is exactly why I do this, because they just light up. And when I see the awe and the mystery and the excitement, I know that some of them, hopefully because of me, will become scientists. That's the goal.
February is Black History Month, and WSFCS celebrates with a wide array of events all over the district. At Parkland High School, students posted Black History facts and shout-outs on the school walls. A homeroom door decoration competition created original and informative doors. A living museum transformed honor students into historical figures. And advanced theater arts students wrote, directed, and performed skits about people and events in Black history. Parkland also held two panels of prominence, one featuring community members, and another where three Mustang staff members took questions and shared very honest and real past personal experiences in hopes of helping and improving the lives of their students.
You know, not only do our students have a story to tell, our community has a story to tell, but our staff has a story to tell too. And I feel like sharing those stories helps bring us closer together and helps make our family more cohesive.
Lots of guests came through our schools during Black History Month. Mrs. Vogt's 3rd graders at Ward Elementary School had the honor of welcoming Samantha Fox-Wynship, a local beekeeper. Ms. Wynship has been a farmer and beekeeper at Mother's Finest Family Farms, one of only five Black-owned farms in Forsyth County, for the past seven years. She happily shared what she has learned in her profession and hopes it serves as an inspiration to these young minds.
It needed to be more diversity in the world of beekeeping, and I didn't see anybody who looked like me and who I could really relate to. And therefore, a lot of people aren't in that profession, because if you don't see somebody who, you know, you can reflect on, then it really makes it hard.
Over at Metal Arc Middle School, they welcomed local musician Keith Byrd. Mr. Byrd performed and talked with students about the influences African-Americans have had on the world of music.
I grew up with people around me telling me the places that I should go, the things that I should do that was right.
East Forsyth High School also had special guests and events all month long. Brian McLaughlin, better known as Bedot, is a very popular host, actor, comedian, and radio personality from the Triad. He's the hype man for the UNC Tar Heels men's basketball team, has a popular podcast, and has appeared on the popular TV show Nick Cannon's Wild Nout. These students know him, look up to him, and were eager to hear his adult stories of success after adversity in his young success after adversity in his younger years.
I try to go in and just try to give them as much of realities of life as possible with a little bit of humor. People, you know, when they see me, they expect me to just come in telling a bunch of jokes, but that's really not what it is when I'm in these types of areas. I just want to cut through and impact when I'm coming to talk to them, so it's a lot more real, you know? But it's still entertaining, and we still have a good time. And if I could just reach one, I've been successful.
I don't want to celebrate African-American and Black history. I want to celebrate the culture and what it still means to us today. We really wanted to dive into the culture and give students something they could grasp a hold to.
It's very good. It's very flavorful, too.
As part of the month, East Forsyth dedicated an entire day of special classes on soul food, African drumming and dancing, and a jazz band, just to name a few of the options.
So we've had a lot of great responses, touching lives and changing lives out here. Black History Month is a part of American history, you know? It's everybody's history. Everybody should be able to take pride in what they're doing and achieving for Black History Month, so that's why it's important. It's all about unity and everybody getting involved.
At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. The instructions were on the sheet as you signed up. Most important rule to remember is that you be kind and respectful, and know we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak. And I would like to request that if you are on the list to speak, please sit in the aisle seats closest to the podium. Thank you. First, we have Peter Antonazzi.
I have public comments on action items A and B. In an evening to be filled with environmental lack of due diligence, the board will likely approve action item A and send its staff to the contaminated site of Hayneson, Indiana Avenue. Unfortunately, their decision is based on, at best, 2-year-old data from a tragically inadequate assessment of building safety. If this sounds familiar to anyone, it is. This is a repeat of the board-made fiasco that shut down the same $40 million campus in 2015. My question to the board is, why do you believe this site is now safe for staff, where the prior board decided this site was unsafe for students? Environmental due diligence is also at the core of action item B, the design for New Brunson Elementary. A safe and healthy learning environment for our children is so important, and I simply do not understand why this action item was not included as a discussion item on tonight's agenda. The prior board refused to disclose the environmental history of this property with the families of Brunson. Not a single page of the thousand pages of damning environmental reports was ever shared in a public meeting. So far, our new board is maintaining the status quo. Here's an example. On February 14th, the Building and Grounds Committee held a meeting to discuss Brunson. Every board meeting up to this point was video-recorded, but when the discussion turned to Brunson, the video feed was turned off. Worse yet, the minutes of this meeting have not been shared publicly. I'll say that again. There is no public record of the board's recent discussion about New Brunson. Tonight is more of the same. Brunson is not on the discussion agenda, only the action agenda. So I have a request. Discuss Brunson tonight. Discuss Brunson openly and honestly. Answer the question, after spending $5 million remediating and assessing this property since 2019, is it safe or not? Discuss the lead benzoyl pyrene, the piles of coal ash. Discuss how much it'll cost to clean up this mess, and how much that cost will impact remaining bond projects. Discuss the perchloroethylene groundwater contamination in the proposed southern playfield of New Brunson. If perchloroethylene sounds familiar, it is. That is the same environmental pollutant that closed Haynes on Indiana Avenue eight years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board, Ms. McManus. First off, I'd like to thank you all for giving me a good laugh at the last board meeting. It's probably the best laugh I've had in a while. It came up when the slide displayed about summer retesting for EOC/EOG failures. First item, June the 12th, remediation. I can remember that date because it's my birthday. June 13th and 14th, retesting, and I laughed out loud. Seriously? Seriously? A kid fails an EOC or an EOG, and you think one day of remediation is going to fix that? The only thing this will prove is the argument that standardized tests are no good because everybody has a bad day. Okay? Do they have two bad days? My idea of a student having a bad day is they are capable of making a 90, but they make a 70. Or they're capable of making a 70, but they make a 60. We have students in this district, we have schools in this district, where 7% of the students score proficient. So my question was, so what's this one day? It's gaming the system. The state says before you can administer a readmission, readadministration of the test, you have to have a summer remediation program. They don't say how long. As in previous years, the readadministration scores will not be included in growth analysis for school accountability or for educator effectiveness. So if I'm a math teacher, and I get a bonus if X number of my students score proficient, and X minus 3 score proficient, and X plus 4 score proficient on the readmission, I don't get a bonus. In other words, if I need 19 to score proficient to get my bonus, but only 17 do, and 10 take the test and all 10 of them score proficient, that's not me? My year of teaching them didn't have anything to do with that? What this is, is a slap in the face, once again, to our educators. And I understand that these rules are not your rules, they're Department of Public Instruction rules, straight out of the document that's attached to the agenda. You're gaming the system. One day, 95% of the students at most high schools in this district pass Math 3. Our best high school has 70% of them pass the proficiency test. Teach them.
Next, Lisa Sykes.
Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, and members of the board, I'm here to talk about reading warriors. My name is Lisa Sykes. My husband Dennis and I are reading warriors at Cook Literacy Model School. He couldn't be here tonight because of a conflict. We tutor 1st graders. He is in his second school year as a reading warrior, and this is my first. We want to share how rewarding this experience has been. What we are doing is important. We are not just reading to the children, although that's clearly a very important thing, but we are actually reinforcing the content that classroom teachers are teaching. We think this year's reading warriors curriculum is excellent, and it's easy to use. We've been given all the training, ongoing support, and activity materials that we need to carry it out. Both of our students are slowly making progress. It's clear why they need individual attention for reading, and it's rewarding to see them make progress. We enjoy learning with them. If we could change anything, one thing comes to mind. The first and the only one, actually, is follow-up. Last May, Dennis happened to meet his student from last year, meet her mother. She asked, "When will she be working with you this summer?" Sadly, the answer was "not at all." But it would have been nice to pick up again in the fall if she needed it, and I've just been told that we're thinking about that. So I was going to mention a second challenge, but I was just told that that's been fixed. So I have time to heartily congratulate those in the system who developed the curriculum, trained and supported us, as well as the support staff that put all those materials together for all of us out here. It's just outstanding, and the board can be very proud of this program, I think. Finally, a major reason I wanted to speak tonight is to publicly thank the faculty, staff, and students at Cook LMS. They have been consistently friendly and helpful. The nurturing affection for the children in that school is palpable. We really enjoy our time being there, and we're very grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Next, Michelle Jordan.
Hello. So some of you don't know who I am yet, but those of you that know, it's because I've been here a lot speaking about many things that go on in our school system, but most especially, over the last several years, it's been about Brunson, because we should have already been in the new Brunson. So I just want to thank you guys for last, at the Building and Grounds Meeting, talking about the schematics and looking at and asking some questions about what we needed to have there for the new school. And I just want to make sure that we keep going forward with the project. We need our new building, because although I love it, my kids still sit there every time it rains and look out the window and wonder, is this going to be another time that we get to exit out of the back of the building through Chin Chin's parking lot because we flood? So, you know, just thank you, and just get us moving forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Teri Nelson.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, Ms. McManus. Let's see if I can read. I'm going to be talking about reading warriors, and I usually bring my computer because it's bigger, but we'll see how well I can read. You heard my name is Teri Nelson, and I used to be a special needs teacher. I was a reading specialist for a little while, and I've seen firsthand how students who are still struggling with reading beyond 3rd grade encounter struggles in all areas of learning in and out of school. Their failure to read proficiently affects learning in every subject. It affects their self-esteem. It affects their desire to stay in school, which affects their life choices, their career opportunities, and their earning potential. When I heard about our school system's goal for 90% of 3rd graders reading proficiently by the end of the 2024-25 school year, I knew I wanted to do something to help achieve that goal. The reading warriors program provided that opportunity for me. I had two days of wonderful, fun, interactive training in this very room, right there where you're sitting. And I was given all of the materials and lesson plans needed for tutoring a child in reading. And I have to say, you don't have to be a teacher to do this. I had never taught this curriculum that they taught me, and they really do give you everything you need. Now I spend just 30 minutes, two mornings each week, at Moore Magnet Elementary, working with a precious, energetic 1st grader, and it is the highlight of my week. If you think you'd enjoy helping a child learn to read better, become a reading warrior. You'll make a positive, lasting impact on the life of a child while enriching your very own. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri, for being a reading warrior. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
So we have had a lot of celebrations, and March is just going to be a continuation of that. So March is Music in Our Schools Month. So to all of our music educators, thank you for what you do. We look forward to continuing the incredible music program we have in our schools. Also, March 6th through 10th, next week, is Breakfast, National School Breakfast Week. We are looking forward to eating breakfast with our students at Paisley on Monday morning. I hope that our board members, if you can, will join us there to enjoy lunch and see what our breakfast program is all about. This week has been Read Across America Week, so talk about the importance of reading that you've heard throughout this, and you're going to hear it again in our 90 by 25 presentation. But reading to students and getting them excited about books is such an important part about becoming a better reader. And so, thank you to everyone that has taken time out just to go and read at our schools this week. March is Women's History Month, and on March 11th, several of our board members and I will be actually in the Women's Legacy Parade, which is the first-ever parade. And one of our own principals is the founder of the Women's Legacy Foundation. That is Alicia Bailey, our principal at Petri. So we're really looking forward to celebrating women and the contributions of women through this parade, by being part of this parade. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. First, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our chief academic officer, will give us an update on the 90 by 25 Strategic Initiative.
Good evening again. I feel like I'm seeing y'all from both of the evening. So I'm excited to at least talk about where we are moving related to our 90 by 25 initiative. As I kind of get started, we always hear in the community, "Why 90 by 25?" Well, the first answer to that is it's possible. Everything about the research show that minimally 95% of our students can meet grade-level expectations by the end of 3rd grade with strategic, intensive, multi-century, systematic instruction. And so, our goal is to help make that research-driven and proven reality an outcome here in our system. So as we think about that, I want us all to be reminded that it's possible. Our timeline, we're going to keep pushing. And as we think about urban districts, no other urban has made it. So hopefully, we will be the first with a lot of our strategic efforts. So we have a framework that we use to support our 90 by 25 efforts. And the 90 by 25 is not just 3rd grade. We also look at that for 8th grade, and then we have also a 90 goal for graduation rate. And so, we're pushing for excellence in every single span and grade span within our district. The focus of our 90 by 25 framework is aligned to our district's literacy framework that uses equity, systematic use of data, professional development, and coaching as key levers to help us support reading progress and improvement in our system. All being wrapped into the idea that we want students to have a love and joy of becoming readers and to build a robust reading culture. So reading is not just about attainment for an outcome, it's about pleasure and engagement and enjoyment for reading, and so that has to also be a part of our work ahead. So our "why" is, of course, we know that reading proficiency is tied to work and lifelong outcomes. We know that students who learn how to read, we close academic and opportunity gaps, we ensure on-time graduation, we provide students access to lifelong learning, critical thinking, and a love of literature. So what have we accomplished so far in '22, '23? I'm really excited about how we have transitioned our 90 by 25 committee. So I think last year when we gave the update, most of our committee was wrapped in instructional services and some community engagement. We have broadened that group beyond just our literacy team. All of our core academic areas are included, as well as our area superintendents, our school improvement coaches, and our community engagement folks. So we have broadened that team to ensure a cross-alignment with all of our academic areas, and that's what it's going to take for us to improve. We've also utilized our 90 by 25 action plan to support our efforts ahead. We prioritize schools and strategic supports for improvement, for coaching support. We partner with the New Teacher Project to help us support our coaching of school-based literacy coaches, working in tandem with our district-based literacy coaches. We have Cohort One of Letters. Our district was the first district to engage in language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. This is a statewide cohort where teachers learn the foundation and the science of reading, and our goal is to now take that learning and help them to apply. and our goal is to now take that learning and help them to apply that in their daily instruction. We have community tutor initiatives. You heard about Reading Warriors tonight and heard from some of our amazing tutors. We also have the North Carolina EdCor initiative. That is also a tutor initiative serving students in our school with an intensive curriculum. Family engagement supports to help provide at-home literacy activities for our families and to model those in a way that parents can help do those with their students as well. Classroom libraries delivered to our classrooms in K-12, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the update, and professional development support for small group instruction. So, what are our focus strategies? So, I just gave you a lot about what we're doing, so what are the key things we're working on? So, first, classroom walkthroughs. So, in order for us to approve, we have to have a focus and a priority of what we're looking for. We have look fours in our literacy across the curriculum in K-5 and 612. The tools look a little different because of what you're looking at in our earlier grades with our foundational skills to looking at comprehension in our later grades. Classroom library use. So, it's great to have books. Now, we got to talk about how we use them, using those for student engagement, choice, and literacy growth with small group instruction. In just a minute, Stephanie Ward is going to talk about our individual reading plans or IRPs, which are focused on K-3 support for progress for literacy attainment, individualized support to help improve our student outcomes, and then quality small group instruction for 6 through 12 to individualize and identify and support student needs in those grade levels. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ward.
Good evening. As Dr. Wilkins said, we have been conducting literacy walks in every area of our district with our 90 by 2025 team. We completed our first round in January and the tool that we're using is not only looking at how we're using our core resources, which was quite an investment for our district a few years back, right in the middle of COVID, but we're also looking at how our teachers are taking the professional learning of letters and implementing that into classroom instruction. So, this tool that we're using is more at this point about us gathering pattern and trend data so that we, as a district, can coach, continue to develop professional development, support our school leaders with how to continue to look at literacy instruction and meeting the needs of our students. With our letters training, it is professional development. It is not a program. It is not a curriculum. We are well into the end of our second year with about 1,000 of our teachers. We're excited to also say that any of our new hires, it's around 260 people we also brought on board this year, are also beginning their letters professional development journey, but with around almost 900 near the end of their online course. We are finishing up our last live trainings, but the key thing now is not just about completing the course, but it's about practicing, coaching, and making sure that the professional learning, which was a huge investment on our state's part to put into every elementary, K-5 teacher, ESL, and EC teacher, as well as our coaches that support the schools. We want to make sure that we now take this, we process it. We all are on the same playing field. There's nothing that is any more important than the investment and the building of the capacity of our elementary teachers to know how to teach reading to all students. So, we have to have time to process, to look at instructional practices, coaching model, further PD, PLT discussions, to put all that into true practice to impact our students. We were super excited at the beginning of the year that every teacher, when they came into their school buildings in August, this was a dream and vision of Ms. McManus. I have to always shout her out for that. She's, how are we going to make it happen, Stephanie? Everybody, every classroom needs to have this, and we did it. And so, we are super excited to go into classrooms and see the tubs of books. We're still working to make sure that they're in hands reach and that students have chosen books and we want to see that the students in key times of the day, whether it's small group during transitions, that we surround children with books. We have a huge focus, of course, on foundational skills, but we also want to continue that students have a love of reading and see themselves in books and have that opportunity as well.
So, I get to be Melissa AG, who is our secondary lead, who was not able to make it with us tonight, but the secondary group is also doing great things around literacy. Their focus has really been in intentionality around literacy in all the content areas, so much so, our first group of walkthroughs focused on non-ELA classrooms. And sometimes, we focus so heavily on what's happening in our ELA blocks that we forget that literacy happens in every single subject area and we have to have an expectation of support and how we monitor that and hold all of our teachers accountable for helping to support that vision. And so, those walkthroughs started back in November and we ended that round of non-ELA walkthroughs in our secondary in January. Small group instruction, professional development has already started for our secondary teachers to help them support the implementation of small groups. Believe it or not, a lot of our secondary teachers think that is an elementary focus. And so, we've really tried to focus on supporting them with literature circles and beginning to use data to identify student needs and to use their classroom libraries to help target some small group instruction and focus skill development with our students, which leads us to classroom library usage. So, one of the things that I think has been really great about our secondary classrooms and literacy is students have such a wide variety now of books. Over 300 have been delivered to every secondary classroom for 6 through 12. And then, text selection guidelines. So, there's been some recent professional development of helping teachers support student interests, needs, but also family supports around text selection as we review libraries and parents' concerns, feedback, et cetera. So, the 6 through 12 literacy walkthrough tool looks at fully, partially implemented or not observed. You will see not yet in that schools felt like that would be helpful, that we know that might not have been present, but we just didn't observe it this time. So, the tool looks at everything from teacher provides students with the opportunities to read grade-appropriate texts, primary resource documents, specific subject area articles, then looking at word study, both through connotations, definitions, and applying those to academic content. So, it's really about not teaching words in isolation, but do we have a systematic process of how we are utilizing and teaching students to use word parts, to learn new vocabulary, and to break vocabulary words apart? And then, evidence about how the teacher uses writing, writing in all areas to express their understanding of content, short answers, paragraphs, essays, personal narratives is a focus for the classroom walkthroughs. And I absolutely love this picture of our secondary teachers because maybe this wasn't nice, but we did a little drawing for teachers and three came up. And so, they thought only three people were getting libraries. And then, they learned it was kind of like the Oprah effect. You get a classroom library, you get a classroom library, and then the crowd went wild and someone captured it. And so, it was just exciting to see how engaged our teachers were. And you wonder why we got our elementary libraries first. Here's why. And the secondaries are just coming in. They started in January and they should finish by the end of March. It's because the teachers got to hand-select the types of books for their classrooms, understanding their students, understanding their needs. And we know as we look at older readers, engagement and interest are huge factors in getting students hooked. And I love this quote from a teacher and I'll summarize it. So, this particular teacher had a background in business and used their purchase of libraries to create and purchase some books that were high interest to students in their classroom. This particular student messaged the author on Instagram, took a picture, got a response back from the author. Wow, how engagement, right? High engagement for students to say, I want to reach out to the author. I want to know more. I was really highly interested. And we have lots more of teachers in our secondary areas that were really excited about the books. So, now, we're going to talk about data. We're going to go back to K-3, K-5, and then do a little secondary.
For K-3, our state literacy assessment is DIBELS. And DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Reading Skills. These assessments are done one-on-one with the teacher and the student, and this is required three times a year for K-3. So, these comparisons that we have before you in the slides, this is showing BOY to MOY. Normally, with kindergarten, and just as we've proven again this year, we see a lot of growth from BOY to MOY with our kindergarten students. And you can see that has held true again this year. At BOY, what we see, green and blue, which means that they are at benchmark or above benchmark, has greatly increased and that our students who were red or yellow, which is below benchmark or well below, have decreased. So, we're continuing to see that strong core instruction is growing our kindergarteners. In first grade, when we look and analyze this, and this is a grade level that we're really digging deep into and doing some core problem solving, there's lots of research and longitudinal studies that show that a student's first grade year of reading experience is, can be a great indicator, predictor of how they'll do on down the road with their reading in elementary. So, it's very essential that we're as preventative and proactive with our core instruction. So, we're working very closely, our coaches, our school-based coaches, our principals, of really doing some core problem solving these past few weeks with our MOY data and making sure that we have some really clear actionable steps of how we can strengthen core instruction and grow those first grader readers. What happens with DIBELS is what it takes to be green or blue at MOY is higher. It's harder to be there than what it was at BOY. The bar is raising. With our second graders, we did see some increase in our green and blue and some proficiency with looking at our district average. Second grade is kind of similar to what you'll see with the below and well below with first grade. Second grade is a huge transition year where we want to really make sure that we're getting very automatic, moving to fluency, moving into those little easy, early beginning chapter books and things. And so, we want to instill that our students are having enough time to practice in text with their reading skills. Third grade, this third grade cohort, these are the students who were the most significantly impacted since they began school due to COVID. When they were in kindergarten, their kindergarten year, we went into closure in March. And I won't go through what happened the other two years, but you know the journey that we've been on and with this early foundational skill development, that's what K-2 teaches you how to read. And so, we're seeing some, kind of just a little stagnation with the growth of moving them into being more proficient readers. So, some key things that we're doing, and this has also been driven by the Department of Public Instruction all across the state, we are looking at what we call core problem solving, and this connects to our MTSS. We are developing what they call individual reading plans for any student who is yellow or red, and that can be a group plan, an individual plan, or a core plan if there's a large percentage of the grade level who are red and yellow. So, we've been working since November of rolling this out with our elementary principals, assistant principals, instructional facilitators, MTSS interventionists, of looking at our resources, the time in our master schedule, how we're using our support staff, how we're using the components of our literacy block and our core resources. And so, each school is working on that with the grade level of teachers in conjunction with them and collaboration of developing these plans so that we make sure that we have really outlined and look at all the actionable factors that we do control each day in core instruction to improve the outcomes of our readers. So, our response through instructional services and myself and my team and MTSS and many other, it's a collaborative effort with many departments. We've been working to help everyone through MOY benchmark data protocols, core problem solving, modeling that, having time together to work on that and help our school leaders feel confident to go lead that work out in the schools. We're going to be offered some targeted phonics professional development to our third-grade teachers. Our third-grade teachers, of course, have been going through letters and it's just different foundational skills than most normal have to be addressed in third grade that we want to make sure that they feel confident and build their capacity and they're to support them with how to address the needs that we're seeing in our third graders right now. And that we continue to progress monitor all of our students who are showing up below benchmark in red and yellow and DIBELS, that we're checking on them every two weeks, every four weeks, to make sure that the instruction is impacting and improving their outcomes and that they're growing. So, those are some key actions that we're using to address our MOY data. This is iReady. This is K-5. Fourth and fifth grade do not have access and are not required to do DIBELS through the state, and as a local, we use iReady. This is a comparison from last year where we were to this year. We also met with iReady last week and they compared where Winston-Salem is to their national averages, and we were scoring higher than other districts across the nation with this. So, we see some slight increases across the grade levels of where we were at this time last year, which is positive, and we want to continue to recoup and regain our reading proficiency.
All right. Looking at our students in 6th through 12th, we do not have a district continuum of ongoing data that we use consistently. So, beginning of the year, we use iReady to track and see where our students are as they start the year. For middle of the year, schools can assign and do the MOY diagnostic, but as a district, we've not set that as a full expectation and it's something on a district level we're working to have some conversation through so we can have some better consistency around data metrics and how we look at data and progress of our students. What you will notice is our data in middle school is not going on the same progressive trend as we saw with our elementary. So, from BOY to MOY, we did see a slight increase of students at grade level from 28 to 30%, but again, this is not all of our middle grade students. This is a small portion. For our seventh grade, we see a slight decrease from 33 to 30% on grade level. Again, not a full set of data. Only 40 to 50% of our students in middle school actually assessed. And a similar trend in eighth grade. Again, a small number of our students assessed with the percent on grade level kind of flat. And so, we know middle school is a place that we, one, need to get some data consistency around, and we also need to work on thinking about our intensive support. Middle school has also had a lot of vacancies of teachers and we're working to provide some support for lots of new teachers in our middle school areas. So, what are we doing for actions? We're working to examine our MOY benchmark data protocols and develop core intervention plans and training plans with our APIs, our secondary ELA coaches, and our MTSS interventionists. We see the need for more coherence with all three groups and how we get some additional support for our middle grades as we get some better consistency around our data. We really need to dive into saying, what does our instruction look like? What are some more standard measures we can use to get some data? And we need to better align our data and our instructional supports for improved outcomes. So, the last part I'm going to talk about is family, community engagement, and then some where we are. So, we've heard about Reading Warriors, so where are we in the numbers? We've had over 200 who've registered as volunteers. Of that number, 76 have selected a school to serve and those who've actually started tutoring. Because first grade is our targeted group, we prioritize most of the tutors who have registered, attended the training in first grades. We have 57 there. We did not assign kindergarteners until middle of year for a lot of reasons. Kindergarteners at the beginning of the year are just transitioning into school. By the time we get to our middle of the year, we can better
By the time we get to our middle of the year, we can better see their gaps to begin to assign tutors and work. We know this number is not enough based on our goal. And so we have a lot more work to do around recruitment, getting more tutors to sign up. We've discussed about some modifications to training so we can get more tutors engaged. But here is a tutor's comment, Donna Boswell, who is a first grade tutor at Moore, who says this is her second year. Great program. It's prepared her with the lessons, well thought out, the resources for every session. It makes her proud to be a member of our community. So I thought that was really great. And we heard the same great feedback from our tutors today. So other family and community upgrades, updates, we want to integrate into existing community events. We're not trying to create new events, but every event we can tap into to touch a family, we want to. We're using that for book giveaways, to do literacy activities with families, to model those activities, and then to give them away for families to do those at home. We're working to partner with organizations like fraternities and sororities to expand the support because they have more networks to reach more families. Providing initiative collaborations within our communities and working with our schools on literacy initiative opportunities. And then we're talking about a Get Caught Reading campaign for our entire community. How can we make reading cool and a great thing to get caught doing? Capturing students, capturing families to just highlight the importance of reading, what we're reading as adults, to remind students that reading doesn't stop in third grade. It's something we definitely need to push. So have we increased literacy proficiency? The short answer is in K five, we see some progress. We need accelerated progress though, to meet our 90 by 25 goal. Are we seeing progress? Absolutely. But we need more. We need more support from our, our community as volunteers. We need more intensive support in our schools as we think about increasing our outcomes. Places that we're not seeing the progress that we would like is in grade six, eight, for all the reasons that I mentioned, that we need to work on to get some catch-up growth in those areas. So what are our next steps to address those areas of progress, but also the need to push? And I say push because we got to push to get to these outcomes. We have to focus on building literacy leaders in our district. And so the letters cohort, we've talked a lot about teachers. There's also a letters professional development engagement for leaders as a piece for them to figure out, how do I lead this work in my building? How do I coach teachers, support teachers to improve outcomes for literacy? Implementing literacy in all content areas. We've seen that work more in middle school as we've started our walkthroughs, but we want to engage that through all, all of our levels to focus on literacy. Encouraging and supporting our usage of libraries with student choice interest and focusing on their needs with small groups. Executing our district literacy intervention plan and using the IRPs as Ms. Ward just mentioned. And then creating consistency around our secondary usage of benchmark data and working with small groups. So we had to say in a nutshell, if anybody asks you, these are our push factors. So this is the areas that we need to continue to work. I know that was a lot, but this is a lot of work that we can't talk about in five minutes. So how can we help with questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, nothing is impossible. Everything is possible, but I am really concerned about the 90 by 25 for third graders. And I've expressed this several times. We had almost a 15% loss between 2019 and 2022 because of COVID. But now we're at, what is it, 39.7? So we need about 50% to make it to that 90%. That's 25% each year. I have a lot of concern about that. And I just want to put that out there on record. The second thing, and you mentioned it, the training for reading warriors. We have got to reduce that time and maybe we'll get more people involved.
Thank you. We, we have talked about that. And so our team is already on it and trying to figure out some hybrid ways to, to decrease the time. So I hope to be back with an update on where we are with that.
I'd just like to make an appeal to anybody listening. If you have 30 minutes twice a week, it is incredibly rewarding to be a reading warrior. The, the little student that I'm working with at Cook has made progress every single time. And it's, it's very small progress, but it is progress. And just to see her light up with pride and confidence, it's, it's just amazing. And she's, you know, she is making progress. It's, it's long, it's slow. I'm, I'm the type who get, likes to get things done lickety-split. So it's an incredible exercise in patience for, for myself, but that's also been good. But it's really, I mean, we looked at, we have 60 some reading warriors, you know, on the front lines right now. We really need more, like 1,500. That's the only way we're going to meet this goal. When you look at the number of third graders and, you know, 50%, it's, it's even actually over 1,500 that we need. And I just can't emphasize that enough that the teachers cannot do this alone. And when I go in to get my little student, all of them come up to the door and say, can you take me today? Can, I mean, these children want the attention. They love the one-on-one. And it truly will make a difference. And it, it will get us to our goal if we have more support from the community. So please consider it.
Can we put you on a commercial that we put on the channel like every day? Because we need that. We absolutely do. Other questions?
Something that struck me while we were going through this. And I always forget the dang microphone. Sorry. Something that struck me while we were going through this that possibly everywhere, but specifically in our middle schools, if there is another option other than iReady, just from having a student that just came out of middle school using iReady and talking to the teachers about it, sometimes that is a not most engaging for the students. So just a little nugget to maybe think about.
So to your point, that, that has been the challenge with middle school. So we've used iReady in elementary. They've used the platform and many of them get tired. They get weary. They want to, they don't want to do it again. They want something else to connect with. And so one of the conversations we had last week is as a district, if that's not working for our students, what do we do? And there are lots of pieces of national research around iReady, but it's not the only platform. We've talked about everything from teacher assessments, teacher-created assessments. Now what can we do to get better data around student support? So it's, it's currently on the table and we need to make some decisions around it. Other questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Deion Jenkins, our chief legal counsel, will discuss the extension of agreements with Appalachian State University for lab school.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and members of the board and superintendent. I have for you tonight, a brief update with regard to our lab school partnership that we have with Appalachian State University for the Academy at Middle Fork, as well as to answer any questions that you may have about the proposed extension on the lease and amendment to the memorandum of agreement. So just to give you a little bit of background, in 2016, the North Carolina General Assembly passed lab school legislation for the purpose of improving student performance in local school administrative units with low performing schools by providing enhanced educational opportunities and training for teachers and principals in those, in those units. We were one of the first wave of lab schools to be established in the district. We partnered with Appalachian State University to create the Middle Fork and the Academy at Middle Fork. We are also one of the few schools or districts, I should say, that have an entire, almost like an entire school model. So the Academy at Middle Fork occupies grades K through five at the Middle Fork School Campus. Other lab schools have a kind of school within a school model. They may have just limited grades or, you know, less, less than an entire school model. But you see here on the screen, the other lab schools that exist across our state. There are partnerships with the, with nine universities in the UNC system that have educational programs. And so the goal of this is that the lab school will partner with those colleges of education to provide this, you know, enhanced learning opportunity and training opportunities for students. To be eligible for lab school, you have to be a district that has at least 25% of your schools identified as low performing. And so in 2018, when we entered into this arrangement, we qualified as one of those districts. Since then, the legislation has been amended to allow the Board of Governors to waive that requirement if for some reason there's good cause to establish a lab school in a district that would not otherwise qualify. And so the way that the lab school is run, it's very similar to the local school board in that the chancellor plays the role similar to the superintendent. They're the administrative head of the lab school. There is an advisory board that's made up of 10 members from varying its positions, including the superintendent of our local school board that serves as kind of like the governing body. And then there's the Board of Governors of the UNC system that operates in a role similar to the State Board of Education. The legislation did provide for state funding for lab schools, but because they are designated as a charter school and have charter-like flexibility, we're required to transfer the per pupil share of our local expense fund to the Academy at Middle Fork for each child that attends. And so just to give you a little bit of background about what's in the statutes, and I did provide you all a copy of Article 29A that lays out the entire lab school legislation. But just to hit a couple of highlights here, under the statute, we are actually required to provide usage of our buildings if, upon the request of the lab school. And that includes access to all school facilities, as well as playgrounds or any other part of the building that's, that's requested for access. However, we can enter, to enter, enter into a lease agreement or a mother memorandum of understanding for fees in exchange for that usage, which we have done in our district. We're also required by statute to provide maintenance of those school facilities if they utilize our buildings. Countywide transportation for students, regardless of our own internal policies and practices with regard to transportation, we have to provide countywide transportation because it's open to students across the county. Child nutrition services, as well as if, if requested, support in a variety of student services supports, like, you know, EC supports and other types of student services supports. As I mentioned, attendance to the lab school is open to any student who lives in the county that meets certain qualifying criteria. So the student had to have been assigned to a low performing school at the time of their application, and they did not meet expected growth in the prior year based on observations, grades, and other performance data that the statute outlines. Also, if there's a sibling of a student who's been accepted into Middle Fork, that sibling can attend regardless of whether or not they, they meet the, the growth criteria. And then, of course, if there's an employee of the lab school, their child is able to attend as well. So while our lab school serves children in grades K through five, the statute says you could actually go up to eighth grade. In our district, we have a current memorandum of agreement and lease agreement with Appalachian State University for the use of our buildings. The initial term was for five years, and so it is actually set to, to renew in June of 2023. And according to the statute, we don't have a whole lot of choice in that matter. Under the statute, if the Board of Governors determines that they would like to extend that middle school, then it says we shall extend our lease agreement for an additional five-year term. So we began discussions in 2016, 2017, and we executed our MOA and lease agreement in 2018, to be effective that July of 2018, and it's been in operation ever since. Middle Fork currently uses about 80% of our Middle, Middle Fork School building. We do have a pre-K wing that we still operate there, and we still have Winston-Salem Forsyth County School staff there. Under this MOA, which I've also provided a copy in your materials, there are agreements for sharing expenses related to maintenance of the buildings. We're required, obviously we would, because we own the building, to fix any major issues, make any larger capital repairs, you know, keep the building in, in good habitable condition. That's our responsibility. We allow them to use all of our materials, furniture, as well as our telecommunications, our existing telecommunications structure. But we also provide tech support if needed, if, if there's some reason, if for some reason they need access to our tech, tech systems. Also, they currently reimburse us, or well, I would say, under the current language of the agreement, they reimburse the district for 80% of the salary for the nurse and social worker. I have a red asterisk there because that's going to be changing under the, the amendment and extension of that agreement. Other services that are contracted for in this MOA include EC support. So if they need additional support beyond what they're capable of doing, they can contract with the district for that. Any health services that we provide for our students, they can also contract with us to do that, such as dental screenings, et cetera. Access to our substitute teacher system and tech support, which again, there, there are asterisks beside those because they're proposing to change that in their extension and amendment to MOA. And they also pay rent in our facility. And that annual rent is 426-840. That's at the time that this lease and MOA was negotiated, that was what we believed to be closer to the market rate for the lease of a building of that size. And that will not be changing in this lease extension and MOA amendment. So as I mentioned, the Board of Governors has already approved a five-year extension for the Academy at Middle Fork. And I've provided for you a copy of the proposed lease extension and amendment, which is not an action item tonight, but will be on the next full board agenda for action. And so under this extension and amendment, it would propose to extend that lease for an additional five years. As I mentioned, we previously had an agreement where they would reimburse us for the salaries related to the nurse and the social worker. However, because those individuals are no longer in those positions, Appalachian State is actually going to hire their own individual who will serve both of their lab schools, Middle Fork and the lab school in Elkin. They'll go back and forth. They've agreed to provide support for our pre-K students as well in exchange for us reimbursing them for 20% of that individual's salary because we are, we're in 20% of that building. They also want, want to delete the sections where they contract with us for tech support and substitute teachers because they've developed their own processes and personnel to handle those going forward. But aside from that, all of the terms of the MOA and lease will remain the same. So with that overview, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Our last item for discussion is the Indiana Avenue Facility Update and Recommendation Request by Darrell Walker, our Chief Planning and Construction Officer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Superintendent Mattis. So let me kind of tell you how we got here, where we are. If you may recall, the county, the property that we have are, had our Lansing Bus Lot, as well as our maintenance facility on Lansing Drive. Forsyth County sold that property to First, First Corp., who developed it for Gardner Foods. So if you've been over there, there's one big, large building that's already in place. It's a distribution center for TW Gardner. They're going to duplicate that same building on where the maintenance facility currently is today. And so that's kind of, you're seeing this request. The county purchased a building called, we call, known as 3810 North Liberty Street, that our maintenance offices will go into. You may recall, we had some conversations about a building 3820 North Liberty, which is kind of behind 3810. And we were talking about that's where kind of our trade folks for maintenance would go. Due to the fact that that building, it had a simulator in it, so the floors kind of sits like this, right? So it was around a million dollars to fix that floor. Plus, we had to do a monthly lease agreement while we were using the building, even though the county, its own county property, it's kind of managed and maintained by the federal government. So the decision was from staff is to look at what other options we have. And instead of spending a million dollars on a building that we would never probably own and pay a lease payment for life, that we'd look at other options. So here we are today, taking a look at the Indiana Avenue Facility and the update and recommendation for use. So let's go back in time a little bit, the history of the property. In 2015, the Board of Education hired an outside firm to evaluate the indoor air quality concerns. You may recall, there was a company called Cava Corp. that was in the, the plant across the street. And they have been monitoring the on-site wells since they were installed and continue to do so today and will continue to do so for the life of, of the property. There was a, a public meeting was held. And then the outside firm presented the study to the Board of Ed in March of that year. So the school was closed in 2015 due to the potential air quality concerns from groundwater contamination. You'll see a quote here from Pinmott Geological, the groundwater COC is primarily the chlorinated hydrocarbon compounds. By the way, I'm not a scientist, so just bear with me on some of this language. Tetrachlorothene and triachlorothane occurred in the distribution originating on the facility. "Tetachlorothene and triachlorothane occurred in a distribution originating on the facility property and extending underneath adjacent properties to southwest toward an apparent discharge zone and unnamed tributary of Peters Creek." So there were two studies that were done, again, as I mentioned, 2015. The first one was done by Mid-Atlantic Engineering Environmental Solutions, and then the final report was brought to the board in March of 2015. And then in 2021, we did an additional study. You may recall, we have the Little Theater, it's a partner with us in the district, and they are housed there, and we did a study as they came into the facility from Froling and Robertson, and they performed a secondary study and sent a final report in April 2021. So I'm going to go through some summaries of the reports. Am I going to go through all of them and give you some assessment of those two reports? So a summary for April 2015 report, there was no additional assessment or mitigation of the vapor intrusion condition, and that is for Haynes-Lorance Middle School is necessary according to Deaner Vapor Intrusion Guidance. The preemptive vapor intrusion mitigation may be used to provide assurance that the vapor intrusion exposure pathway is not created and unacceptable exposure to users within the building. So basically, an intrusion system recommendation to be installed on the facility. Remediation of groundwater contamination is a permanent remedy to vapor intrusion concerns at Haynes-Lorance Middle School. At the time, is what it's called, Cabo Ilco has received approval and remedial action plans from Deaner for groundwater remediation on the Haynes-Lorance Middle School property. So what's kind of happened there since those two studies? There's been a small portion of the building that we've used from a district perspective for storage, for furniture, product storage around the district. I mentioned earlier, the Little Theater has been a partner with the district and leases a portion of the building. They've been in there for the last three years. They have allowed schools to use their costumes and props at no cost to the district, and so it's been a great partnership, and they want to continue to stay in the facility. Utilities used, we're turned on the building in a minimum way to kind of keep integrity of the building as much as we possibly could, and then there's been very minimal capital maintenance type repairs completed to secure and protect the facility, mainly because we just needed some guidance and direction of where the future of the building would go. So in the 2021 report, Section 1.1 is about remedial action of soil and groundwater, and the current status of the remediation of the contaminated properties is detailed in the January 8, 2021 remedial action plan. With some exceptions, statistical analysis of site groundwater contaminants of concern concentrations continues to indicate decreasing trends over time. The exposure, occupational exposure limits, site cleanup limits, background, this is really around people in the building during an eight-hour day and exposure. So this is general consensus among health and safety practitioners and entities that develop guidelines for workplace safety to agree that certain concentrations of chemicals are acceptable during a typical eight-hour workday. However, when these concentrations are exceeded, this is potential of harmful health effects. When more than one sampler per week, sample per week, per worker, I'm sorry, per shift is collected, the results are averaged usually over an eight-hour period, and the result exposure is referred to as a time-weighted average, and most of these, this OEL is the occupational exposure limits are established for an exposure that would occur over the course of a typical work shift, which is eight hours. Section 3.1 covers the entities that establish occupational exposure limits, and this ACGIH is the American Conference of Governmental Industrial Hygienists establishes the OEL, which is the occupational exposure limits, in the form of thresholds, limit values, and these TLVs can exist as TWA or the STEL, which is the short-term exposure limit. So the entities defined TW, TLV, TWA as the TWA concentration for a conventional eight-hour workday and a 40-hour workweek, to which is believe that nearly all workers may be repeatedly exposed day after day for a working lifetime without adverse effects. So the TLV, STELV is defined as a 15-minute TWA exposure, should not be exceeded at any time during a workday, even if the eight-hour TWA is within the TLV, TWA. So the threshold limits is the concentration to which is believe that workers can be exposed continuously for a short period of time without suffering, one, from irritation, chronic or irreversible tissue damage, dose rate-dependent toxic effects, or narcosis drug-like state of stupor of sufficient degree to increase the likelihood of accidental injury, impaired self-rescue, or materially no work efficiency. One more summary around this is entities that establish occupational exposure limits. Additionally important is that the OSHA enforces a general duty clause, which states that employers are required to provide these employees with the place of employment that is free from recognizable hazards that are causing or likely to cause death or serious harm to employees. This is the Section 5A1 of the Occupational Safety and Health Act. OSHA has set a precedent in the recent past for issuing citations for exposure that did not exceed the existing PEL that did exceed a current reading. So a lot of information here, but just to continue and kind of wrapping up this summary, the EPA is tasked with managing large contaminated properties that are referred to as the Superfund Sites as a screening tool by which they establish cleanup criteria and to gauge progress through large-scale remediation projects. The EPA has developed a regional screening levels, which are published and are available for download from the EPA's website. The RSLs are often used to compare results of testings that has been conducted for this report, and for this report, the RSL for residential was compared to the analytical data as they were the most stringent of the EPA threshold values. It is important to understand that this value has been developed to represent risk associated with persons residing in the structures of prolonged duration of time, any more stringent than RSL developed over a typical occupational setting. So in conclusion, in the 2021 report, the analytical results indicated that the concentrations of VOCs were not detected in excess of the lavatory method detection limit, and with the exception of the chloroform and vinyl chloride concentrations for EPA, RSL concentration concern, the lavatory method detention detection limit was sufficiently sensitive for comparison to all of the threshold values. Based on the lavatory analytical results, the values observed during the testing of the ambient air did not exceed any existing OSHA and other entities. So depending on the success of the soil and groundwater remediation to mitigate the potential future vapor intrusion, the potential for the mitigation of the VOCs could increase when heating, ventilation, air-conditioning systems become fully operational. On the day of the study, ambient air testing HVAC systems were not operational. It's important to understand that the pressure relationships that develop within buildings caused by HVAC systems can drive soil vapor intrusion. FNR's report recommends that during any renovations, as we move forward with the facility, associated with the future occupancy, that a mechanical engineer knowledgeable of vapor intrusion with subsurface contamination be consulted for planning of the HVAC system. Future controls should continually potentially mitigate the potential for soil vapor intrusion and could include sub-slab mitigation systems, control of air pressure gradients, and calculations of fresh air intake among potential controls. Fresh air intake, we hear us refer as ERVs in the past. FNR recommends that when renovations are complete and prior to occupancy, a flush-out period be observed when an appropriate number of air changes have occurred, and WSFCS could conduct air testing similar to that perform during assessment. So basically, running the systems full blast for a while before we be involved. So that's a lot of information, a lot about the science, but I just want to talk to you a little bit about the approach as we move forward. Staff has talked about this as a phased approach concept for usage. I really want us to focus on Phase 1. Phase 2 and 3 are kind of out there, five years plus probably more likely for us here in the district, because we do have a current lease at Whittaker Park that we've been able to extend and be able to use a little more space out there. And so early 2024 is when the maintenance trades departments and maintenance will have to relocate from Lansing Drive. So here are the repairs needed in Indiana Avenue, and even those, they may seem short bullet points, they're inclusive of what was in the report as recommendations. And so we know we need a new roof to protect the building envelope, the mechanical improvement, the boiler air chitter replacement is part of that ERV changing of airflow, and the intrusion monitoring system is the underground system that would monitor, have the monitoring of the wells, but you also have monitoring of chemicals coming into the building. So what's the timeline look like for move of Phase 1? Originally, it was June of 2024. Developer, I think, went back to the county, now moved that up to January 2024. We have to relocate maintenance and facility office staff to 3810. Those renovations are currently underway and should probably be done in the next 60, 90 days. The January to June 24 maintenance trades to Indiana Avenue is kind of the timeline we're looking at. Obviously, some of that would pertain whether we can get equipment and supplies in order to do the work, which is part of the reason why we really are kind of pushing for a decision on this, because we do have that supply chain issue to work around. And then in January 2024, we'll also have to relocate our local garage to coexist with the county garage on Liberty Street, and we will be working together with them. As I mentioned, Phase 2 and 3 are out there pretty good ways, so there's no immediate timeline and rush to that. Technology will continue to be at Whittaker Park. The county purchased the building at Whittaker Park, and technology can stay likely up to five years, possibly more, in our current agreement. In those future phases, just so you know, to keep in mind for those that may remember this, five years plus from now, we'll have a technology in Phase 2. Other potential department that we've had some discussion about is support around our social workers, maybe our newcomer center, EC services, some additional training and professional development space, potentially moving our child nutrition department over, and then partnering up and having some community programs within the building. This is the phase programming schematic of the building, and your focus should really be on the blue, which is the Phase 1, and then in Phase 2, 3, as I mentioned, is pretty far out there. So here's the money that goes along with it. Again, focus on Phase 1. Those dollars in Phase 1 include those services I mentioned around a roof, ERV, mechanical systems, and the intrusion, underground intrusion plan. So as you see, we have, you'll see we have 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars that we have in savings from the county project at 3810. County is going to allow us to apply those funds towards this project so that we would have a funding need at a point of decision-making around, you know, $2,346,302. And so just note that these are all kind of estimates based on current data and ideas around future phases. We'll come back with full bids at a later time with full dollars, so you'll see more of that to come. I do want you to know that we did get some feedback from our maintenance department, those trades folks that would go over there. There was a presentation held for all staff. We had 106 respondents, 74 was yes to the new location, 18 was maybe. The breakdown on that 18 was eight asked for more info on air quality, five wanted more info on the security of the property, and four did not define. There were 14 no's, three noted concerns around security, one noted air quality, and 10 did not define. So the recommendation from staff is consider approval for Indiana Avenue property be used as a staff work location. Approval for use of this facility will allow staff to formally release bids, determine actual costs, and return to the Board of Ed for funding source recommendation and approval. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
You know, Darryl, you know, I have a question. Just tell me in a nutshell, between 2015 and presently, what have we done as a district to ensure our community that the building is safe?
So we've actually, to be honest, we've done very little maintenance, where we've just kind of held the building together. We've kept utilities on it to try to maintain the integrity most best we can. Obviously, our roof is really under stress right now because it has been sitting there empty for the most part, but having the Little Theater has been a good thing because it's kept lights on, it's kept utilities on, it's kept flow in there. So we've been using it for storage and other things, but we've done little investment dollar-wise into it. This will be our large investment going forward to bring some integrity back to the building.
You know, because I was on the board at the time when we made the decision to close the school.
Yeah.
And I'm sure people kind of know the background of that story, but what we were seeing as a board, that there was a community perception the school was not safe.
Correct.
We were monitoring the attendance. I think you remember that, the attendance went down. I mean, kids were not showing up, parents were not showing up. So I just want to make sure that if this comes up in a few more years, that we can communicate to our community that this building is safe.
The two big adds to this that weren't currently on the building when you were on the board before is the underground intrusion system.
Okay.
And the outside air component. So when you went in the building before, it kind of always felt stagnant to you.
Correct.
Right? I mean, you had air, you had heat, it just felt stagnant. This is going to give you flow, like you're sitting in this room tonight, where you can kind of feel air blow across your face or across your body. So it'll bring to that outside air. So those two things are currently not on the building, that will be added to the building when we move staff in.
And tell me those two things one more time.
So it's an intrusion system, an underground intrusion system. And by the way, you're going to see that same thing at Brunson.
Right.
When it comes up. And then a mechanical, a new mechanical system that we call ERV, it's an injured recovery ventilation system that circulates air.
Okay. So before we move staff, Ian, we will have those things implemented.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. As well as the new roof.
Correct. Okay.
And just, I think because it was so much information, just to kind of clarify for the public, this is only for key staff occupy to look at what we're needing to renovate the building. This is not to actually occupy outside of, and just start filling up the building and putting folks in the building to work.
Yeah, right now, it is our trades department, like maintenance, like plumbing, electrical, grounds, general building maintenance, those folks who we do not have a space for at 3810 will be in that building as part of their day-to-day work. So that'll be their home, kind of go-to place.
Darryl, my question is, again, what did you share with the staff, the 106 respondents? What information? Did you share the entire 500 pages here, or what did you share with the staff before they voted on?
They went, I think it was more of the summary, kind of executive summary piece of the study in both times, both the 20, the 15 and the 2021. Is that correct, Lauren? I think that was right.
Sorry, that's a long ways. Yes, so Justin Dyson helped prepare this presentation this evening, and this presentation was actually used to speak to the entire team, to walk through the summary. There were also some additional slides as well that included the tables that you all see in your full reports that talk about the levels, so they can see the actual levels in the building. Excuse me. And Justin talked a lot about what a lot of the different things from the summary mean, and trying to put that in layman's terms, and allowed the staff to ask questions and go through that before voting.
And I think this might be my last question. I think, I'm not sure. But, Darryl, can you put back up the survey? I'd just like to just take a glance at that one more time. Okay. So 74 of your staff that will be in this building said yes, they were comfortable with it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And out of the And out of the 18 maybes, you see there were eight that asked more about indoor air quality.
Right. And I'm sure you guys gave them the information that, to ensure, yeah, we're, we're good, okay. All right.
Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, what, sorry.
Let me, let me say one more thing. That information that, that you went through, I think just to the average person, it would be kind of difficult, like you said, just to digest all of that.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's a lot of heavy science, biological stuff. So I'm just saying, maybe the next time, if there is that type of information, that we can just make it a little bit, what I call the average person friendly.
Yeah.
But thank you, Darrell.
You're welcome.
I think with, and I brought this up, we've discussed it, and, and I'm going to bring it up again. I think that if we are looking at occupying this building, we need to be careful in how we say we are approving occupancy. One, we don't need to be going backwards and saying we are okay to occupy a building when we truly don't have firm cost on how much it's going to be for us to occupy a building. I understand the need to put people in a home. I think that it needs to be very specific, that we are occupying the building for the, the use of getting bids to see how much we can. I think it has to be, because we, we discussed that at length, and it seems like now we're, we're moving forward in a different direction again. So I'm very, I'm a little torn, or a little confused by how we're here again.
Will you go back to the, the last slide that, Kevin?
Which one, the money slide?
Uh, no, the last slide that shows the recommendation. So tonight's, so, so we can't, here is what we, we cannot go to bid, out to bid for bids unless this board, the board says, we think eventually you all could put staff there. If the bids come back, we come back, you all approve the bids. If the bids come back and they're too high, this may be a different conversation. So what you would be approving tonight is allowing us to go out for bids. So if you want us to reword, like when you do make the motion and, is that later on the, yeah, if you make a motion later, or is that tonight?
It is tonight.
I'm, I'm, this has been a little long. So if we, if we make the motion tonight, we can just make it, if the board, you know, approve us to go out to bid, and we're going to be coming back. There will be no occupying the space until we do all that.
Which is, which is kind of bullet two, Ms. McManus.
Exactly, that's, that's what we're really, but see, if you say you're okay with number two, that we can go out to bid, then you're saying that if that bid comes back okay, that we'll be able to then occupy the space at some point. Because if not, why are we going out to bid? Why are we bringing bids back if the board does not think it's okay for us eventually to occupy the space? Does that make sense? So if tonight you all want it to be, go ahead and go out to get bids, we can just vote on that, bring it back. And then if you approve those bids, then that could be the same thing as approving occupancy of the space. Is that, does that make sense, or, okay?
Okay.
So however you all want to reword it, Board Member Kuhn, however you all want to, like, word that at the, the voting time.
Okay, thank you. So our next order of business is action items. And the first is to consider approval of the Haynes occupancy. Do I have a motion to approve the Haynes occupancy?
I move we approve getting bids to occupy the facility.
Okay. So Board Member Crowley has made a motion to approve getting bids to go out for Haynes, for the Haynes building for occupancy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Board Member Miller. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Oh wait, all in favor, okay. And are you in favor or opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed, okay. So all, okay, once again, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, we have eight in favor, one opposed, and the motion passes. Next, consider approval of the schematic design for Brunson Elementary School replacement. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, Board Member Crowley has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Board Member Kuhn has a, has made a second. Do I have any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the grant of easement on Sprague Neighborhood Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Board Member Kuhn has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Brown Gaither has made a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the bids for the Griffith Elementary Roof Replacement Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion was made by Board Member Kuhn, second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the 2022, 2023 retesting program, readministration of the EOC and EOG. Do I have a motion? Okay. Motion has failed.
Board Chair, Board Chair Calvin, what I'd like to suggest for this one, is possible, can we look at retesting during the summer school program, which gives students more time and more focused intervention during the actual summer school in late June, early July, within the testing window?
Okay, Mr. Craft, would you like to speak on that?
Sure, so it's a possibility. If those tests are administered before July 6th, that's the end of the accountability window for the 22, 23 school year. The details would have to be put into writing, right, of which, when will students receive remediation? And then when will they take the test? Of course, we'll need to consider which teachers will provide that remediation, those types of things as well. This is due to the state April 3rd, so we had to make a decision tonight.
And the reason why I suggest that, because I know we've already got summer school already on the calendar for all students. And doing the summer school intervention, we can focus and give them more than a day. We can focus on other interventions and then use the retesting. Since teachers are already hired for summer school, it's not an extra burden. We use part of that process of being a summer school, just something to consider.
Yeah, Paul, Dr. Wilkins, the summer program starts what, January, I mean?
January, June. So June 26th, so you, you technically could have a week. Is that right? Am I getting my timing right?
On the calendar, 26th is a Monday, and I suppose it's a four day week, is that right?
Do the 29th.
So you want probably two days for testing. And so if Monday and Tuesday were your remediation days, Wednesday and Thursday were your testing days, it's possible, it's, it's possible to do that.
I still think that's too short of a time for remediation. I really do. As a teacher, I think that's not enough time. If we couldn't do it in a semester, I think two days, one day, it's just not sufficient.
Brother, Mr. Caff, could you also share at maybe another meeting about how other urban districts are doing retesting?
Sure.
Also, the percentages of students who move
Yeah.
from point A to point B doing a retesting. And thirdly, also how this impacts our school's performance indicators?
Yeah, these are all great questions, and you have a good point, right? We'd love to provide a lot more remediation for our students if we could, and then do that, that retesting at the end of it. Other urban districts do it similar to our proposal. The reason they do that is teachers are employed for about three days at the end of the school year, right? So if we wanted to do a much longer remediation and then retesting window, we would need to employ our teachers for a much longer period of time. This point about how much bump could we get? An average of about five to 10 percentage points. That can be significant enough for some schools to increase a letter grade, decrease a letter grade, come off the low performing list. So you know the proponents of this, the proponents are the principals, right? Because there's a lot riding on that school performance grade, a lot riding on that school performance. That's why you often hear principals, principals want to do this, right? You may hear responses from teachers saying that they're less interested in doing this, right? Because they want to clean up their classroom, and they want to get home, and they want to, right, do all those things. And so, actually, I think, is Mr. Freeman here? Yeah, he is. So if, if you're interested in hearing from a principal, here's a principal who's a vocal supporter of, of why this should happen. And to Board Member Watts's point, you know, he certainly believes, you know, this can help his school performance grade, so.
Board Member Kuhn?
I would like to hear how it actually helps our students.
Yeah.
Because I haven't heard anything that makes it student centered or student focused.
Right. Sure, yeah, please, Mr. Freeman.
Well, one of the things I want to say about how it helps students, you know, when we talk about these, of course, end of grade tests, we have a population of students who hadn't experienced that kind of success in school before. And so if we create opportunities to create those avenues for success for kids, especially as they start in elementary and move their way up through middle to high school, we're getting in front of the game as it relates to, you know, some of the things we're looking at when we talk about 90 by 25, and when we're talking about making improvements across the board. And so, you know, just that avenue of success for, if it's one student, if we value the optics of what end of grade testing gives us, I think we have to value every opportunity that we have to improve those optics. And the schools that it really hurts the most are the schools that have the most at risk students, where those students have not experienced success over a period of time. And so, you know, I left the meeting, I'm here speaking for some of my colleagues, but I left the meeting where the principals were in consensus, not necessarily unanimous about retesting, but we did come to a consensus about wanting to do that. So I think it's important to, you know, allow us to provide some of those answers that you all are asking, answers to some of the questions you all are asking before we make a decision about whether or not we approve retesting. So I really wish you all considered that.
Mr. Freeman, would, would you be amenable? And I know you're not, I don't want to put you in a position to speak for all principals, but I, I would really be interested to hear from more of our principals regarding this, particularly because as I'm thinking about it, we always talk about how the, the EOC or the EOG is not an accurate parameter of student success, particularly because you never know what that student went through that day before they came to school. So you have to be in the appropriate mindset to test. And so I guess in, in my mind, I'm like, even if the, the opportunity for, to, for remediation is small, you still provide an additional opportunity to take a test that otherwise would be just based on what you did that day. And so it's just another opportunity to take it. So I, I'm kind of, my mind is able to kind of be moved a little bit. I, I just think I would be interested to hear a little bit more from our principals, because to the point about it being student centered, I think it's easy to say, well, kind of principals, the desire from principals and building leaders is that there's an opportunity to improve the letter grade. I think that's the sort of, that is kind of the kind of surface level assessment. But I think that because we're in a system where currently that's what matters, until we fundamentally change the way in which students are assessed, I think we really have to take a look at sort of any opportunity for students to perform better, and also to boost their belief in self, we have to really look at. So I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, that was a long thing, but yeah.
Can I just have a few more seconds? One of the things that happens, Mr. Bohannon, when we get our reports, and we're looking at these scale scores, and we're going over the rosters, there can be five or six kids who's listed on the roster, who's one point away from being proficient. And, you know, I'm just thinking of, you know, regardless of the amount, the amount of time, if we can create conditions and create the opportunity for those students to increase by one point, we actually have a chance to do something to the percentages as it relates to being proficient.
When I think about the stress that tests cause a lot of our kids, and we are constantly in their rooms telling them, you're more than this test. You are, you're, you are not the sum of what this test tells you. But then we are going to in turn say, oh, but we need you to take this test again to see if you can get that one point or those 10 points, because we need our grade to look better. We're putting that emphasis right back on a test that we're telling them isn't a measure of who they are. And, and I struggle with that, because as a parent who has seen what testing does to children and the stress it puts on them, I, I don't know, I have a real, I have a real hard time saying that, okay, let's do the complete opposite of what we are telling our children that we are doing. That, that's real hard for me.
So let me suggest, and also that perhaps we can bring in some teachers who've had experiences with, with remediation, especially at the middle school level and high school level, because in my past experiences, we try to create an environment that does exactly what she's saying to. The second testing is not stressful. We try to create an environment of remediation where it's more engaging, more fun. But many is also boosting their confidence level so that we can do this together. And we want to work together with you to make this happen. And at the end, the result, if it is a boost in percentage points, great. But we want to give that child a covenant, you know what? You were this close, if you would just, you know, do this a little differently, we can get you there. And then he or she becomes also to understanding that I'm now quote proficient. We're not talking about the student going from one to a four. We're talking about those students who are right there at the cuffs of a two, or three, or three, or a four. And I think hearing also from teachers who have had remediation experience can say that, yes, in a day or two, it can make a difference for that student who's at that one point or two point.
I do agree that we need to have some teachers that have some input. But coming from a teacher's point of view, I'm telling you, it's very, very difficult to get that. And I know we're going to get one or two students, and it's going to just benefit the principals and the schools. But long term, it's not helping the teachers or the students.
Well, this is due to the state April 3rd, so you have to make, if you choose not to vote, right? We won't have one, but it's due to the state on April 3rd.
So let, let me ask a quick question. Andy, with the state guidelines, they say that you can't do this until after the end of the school year, but then after the last day of school.
That's correct.
One, thank, Calvin, thank you, Mr. Freeman, thank you, stay, stay, stay close, okay. Just in case. Anyway, what about the remediation? Do they also say the remediation cannot take place till after the school? Because when do we end EOG testing?
Right, so the 10 day windows at the end of the school year, we can administer the EOGs anytime during that 10 day window. We can start doing remediation the next day, that's fine.
Okay.
There has to be at least one day of remediation after the school year ends.
Okay.
And students that take the retest have to come to that day of remediation.
All right, so if the last week of school, if there, if the test were done and there was that one last week, could some of the remediation, since we're not doing post planning, we're still, could, could kids be regrouped?
Yes.
Like, if parents want them to, again, you guys, this is not for all. Parents get to, like, I'm thinking of elementary. It's optional.
Right.
If a child, could the remediation be during the school year? And then maybe?
Yes, we turn around the scores within 24 hours to the schools.
Yeah, so I mean, we don't have to do, end the year, one day of remediation on Monday, test on Tuesday, Wednesday. So, I mean, there are, there are other ways to do this. Again, it is not, not everybody has to do it. If a parent doesn't want their child to take it, they don't, they don't need to take it. Are there, just out of curiosity, can I put you on the spot? We do have a teacher in the room, do you mind? Yeah, Michelle. Sorry, I just would like to hear, because you teach fifth grade, right, or fourth?
Fifth.
Fifth. Have you ever done, had kids do the, the retest?
We've had all sorts of remediations over the years based on the state laws. So sometimes we've had to do it during those last few days, get groups of kids in and then retest, because there was different, I mean, you.
2018, 19.
Right, yeah.
Have you?
Yeah.
Did you have students that year that did better after?
Yeah, we do. I mean, there's always a few that, you know, move on. But just listening to all this discussion, like, trying to figure out that remediation right there as those last few days, I mean, that's putting a lot on the principals and the staff, trying to figure out how we're going to have to shift everybody around, because it's going to be like handfuls of kids, so then who's reteaching those kids? While we're then having the rest of the kids in class.
Right.
But I know, like, what he was saying, a couple, last year, we didn't do it, but I think it was.
18, 19.
18, 19. It was like those last few days where we each had to give up like half of our, because we have those three teacher workdays. And so as a staff, we had to give up like a half of a day. And we rotated through of who was testing kids that came in. in.
Do, I mean, can I ask your opinion on it? Do you like that model? Or, I mean, again, when retesting during the last week and regrouping, maybe another teacher could actually seal the deal instead of the teacher that's had all year to seal, to seal the deal?
So back in the day when I had to do those like groupings and reteachings, like, it was probably the worst several days of my school year, every year. It was just not, none of the kids wanted to be in that room, you know?
Yeah, I'm sure.
It was just not.
Especially if it's fun in other rooms.
Right. When they know the end of the year stuff is going on and other kids are having things going on, they don't want to be in there.
Okay.
But do I feel like kids need the opportunity to retest? Yeah. You know, even if not everybody takes advantage of it, I feel like this is something, it's not just about the scores for the schools because, yes, it does. But when you look at what that does to the schools, then that's, you're talking about the next year. It affects every child in that classroom. Because this year, we're, I mean, Brunson's one of those schools. So even though I'm an HAG teacher, I have, I started my PDP plan and a whole bunch of stuff and then bam, it got kicked back and all of it was dumped out. And now I'm on like a four, like as if I'm on a summative and I have all of these things that we have to do. And there's all of these extra steps the schools have to do.
More sanctions put on the school.
More sanctions, more things that actually take away from what, I mean, it's, it doesn't help. I mean, it just makes us do more work. I'm having to do more lesson plans. I'm having to do more stuff just to prove that what we're already doing in our classrooms. So I, I do feel like for the kids, they need a chance to try to like get that bump up. Not everybody agrees to do it. So the parents that don't want to do it opt out, parents that do opt in. Some of the kids want that and, you know, it, I, I feel like it needs to happen in some way, shape or form.
Thanks, Michelle. Can I ask Calvin to come back up? He, I think he wanted to say one more thing.
I thank you for that. I just wanted to point out on the high school level, it looks completely different from the way it looks on elementary. When we talk about the reorganization and moving kids around, we have a little more flexibility with that because when we are in our exam period, we only have a limited number of kids who are on campus. We still have our staff and so we can direct staff and move staff in ways that might not be afforded at the elementary and middle school levels.
What, what would it look like if it were just the high school testing level? I mean, just throwing that out.
That's an option. You all could choose just elementary, just middle, just high. You could do two of the three or all three. I'll tell you that, you know, what, it takes a good principal to actually recruit kids, that you get enough kids to come and take the test in order to get that bump that you're seeking, right? Obviously, we heard from a good principal, and the majority of those principals want that to happen at the high school level. So, but that decision's totally up to you all.
I guess, the issue I would have, though, is that wouldn't that deprive, and I guess it's about maybe who wants it, but I guess if you're talking about providing the opportunity, it deprives middle school and elementary school students of that opportunity if we only did high school, which I guess is to me the impetus. I mean, the, the reason why I'm sort of, I came here with the expectation that I wasn't going to support it. And then I, like, I'm hearing things that sort of are making me change my mind. I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like a shift to only focus on one group, one, you know, group of students would be the best thing to do, just given, given the circumstances. But, but I heard you say, Andy, that the high school principals want it, the majority of them do at least. Do you, do we know definitively, like, are principals supporting it at the other levels as well?
Yeah. Elementary principal, elementary and middle principals want it. They've wanted it in the past. That's where we did it before. We did not do it at high school. As I talk to my counterparts across the state, they struggle with getting high schoolers to come back and take the test, right? And so in the past, when we did it, we didn't include high school. We just did elementary and middle. And so this year, I turned to the high school principals and said, do you want to do it? And the answer was, yes, they did.
And so the amount, so is it, then forgive me if this was said already, but the amount of remediation, does it have to be just one day or can it be more than that?
It, it can certainly be more. The reason we recommended it is teachers are employed for three days after the school year ends, right? So that gives us one day of remediation, the two days of testing that we need. If we go longer than that, we have to come up with money to employ the staff who will do that remediation and testing on those other days.
I think it's important to keep in mind, too, some students don't test well, not because they don't know the information. You know, having, having a bad night's sleep or being rushed in the morning because they had to help four siblings get dressed and get out the door. I mean, there's, you could go on and on with the reasons kids have a bad testing day, which is why, I, I mean, I, I agree with the speaker who said you can't teach a whole semester in a day. I agree with that. If you don't know most of the material, you're not going to pass this test. But there, but there are other reasons kids do poorly on this test and having that opportunity might help that, you know, handful of students.
Yeah. I want to totally agree on that. As a former third-grade teacher, and I've administered many of these tests, it is all about the opportunity for the student. Who doesn't want a second chance? It's not about remediation. It really isn't. I mean, it'd be great if we could do that, but giving the student the opportunity to retest really is fair, in my personal opinion.
But our third grade, they're already getting, they automatically get their retests for their.
But I think three through 12, or four through 12 is, is fair.
So I like Vice Chair Bohannon sort of came in with not supporting this, but I would like, I mean, I just, I support the principals and I support the teachers. And of course, my number one is, is the students. So I, I would just like, I just would like to have some kind of a compromise if we could figure out one that wouldn't overly tax the teachers but would also give the students that wanted to opt in an opportunity. So, Board Member Watts, you had a motion on the table and I know it was a little complicated.
It's been such a long discussion if I got with the, I want to be honest with you. But I, my motion was originally to have the testing, retesting part of the summer school program and not the last days of school to give everyone the opportunity to be where they need to be. And then those teachers in summer school, there's an expectation that they will be doing the testing, the retesting.
If they only, if they want to do it. And that would only be an opt-in if the students in summer school wanted to do it.
Most definitely, yeah.
So under that proposal, I guess the way I would see it, summer school starts on the 26th, which I presume is a Monday. We would do perhaps two days of remediation on that Monday and Tuesday, and then two days of retesting on that Wednesday, Thursday. You know, so pros and cons, right? So that's nice because we have teachers employed during that time. We have a little bit more time. So that's a pro. The con would be, will we get enough kids that come back? The schools won't realize the bump unless we test enough kids. Recognize that what we're doing here is really capturing standard error in statistical speak, right? And so the, the more kids we get tested, the, the greater our chances are of capturing more proficient students. And so part of the question you all have to weigh is, would we get more kids if we do this right at the end of the year? Or will we get more kids under Board Member Watts's proposal? Certainly, we have teachers employed at that time. We have a structure in place for the summer program. So those are things you all have to weigh in, in that decision-making.
And I also think that school administrators, if we saw that we were trying to do this and we did not, option A did not work in the school day, school year, and B, summer school, I believe some of our school administrators would make sure that students are excited, quote, to be there for that second testing. And I've, I've had experiences with that. And it's major, it's how you sell it.
Yeah.
How you make it work for students to attract the students and parents to, to opt in for this opportunity. So I believe, I believe our school administrators would probably find a way to say, let's make this a win-win. It's not ideal, but let's make it a win-win for us in summer school.
Kids are not on their home school campus during the summer, remember that? That's a complicating factor.
That is one thing when you're not in your environment that you are, that is a good point. When you're not in the environment that you with trusted adults, that you already know, you've built relationships with. So that does, that also would play, that we didn't think about, I didn't think about when we were talking about doing it at the end of summer. They're not with the people they know.
Summer will have very limited sites to concentrate students and staffing to, to provide support to students who are part of the program. So again, limited because of the, the number of sites.
But also, based on past history, we've tried to find the top teachers to teach our young people during summer school. And I do believe that even though it may not be the same classroom, the same building, if you get the student with the right adult, great things happen.
I would agree with you 100%. And if that is the board's choice, we're going to figure out how we can support that to support our students, encourage our staff, encourage them to attend so that we could reassess them.
So, Dr. Bogans, this may not be a question. So when, when is the, when do we have to make a decision? My understanding is that it has to be submitted or something.
Unless you were to call another board meeting, you have to make the decision tonight. We submitted on April 3rd to the state. That's when it's due. That's right. That's why it was a discussion item last time in an action. April, did I say March? Excuse me. April 3rd. You have to make a decision tonight is the answer to your question. That's right.
We couldn't make decisions in March, at March meetings?
Wait, is it April? I'm confused. I'm so sorry. Was it April or March 3rd?
It must be March 3rd. It is. Yeah. Thank you. Which is why it's on tonight. Right, right, right. That's right. Excuse me. It is a long night, guys. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, you have to make the decision tonight is the answer.
Well, the original motion is failed, so we need an additional motion or a substitute motion.
I would like to make the motion that we retest during the week of summer school.
Okay. A motion to retest during the week of summer school was made by Board Member Watts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Board Member Crowley has made a second. Any further discussion?
We do feed the students during summer school? Okay.
We feed students during summer school.
Just to confirm, so if we do this, the children are at a different location and they're not, okay.
High school students typically are at their, at their home schools typically for high school. Elementary, middle school may be different, but most high schools may have some limited.
So that will not be the case this summer. For most of our high schools, we use a platform for credit recovery for most of the students who might not have been successful. And we do have some small sites that we have in-person support as well. But it won't be as intensive as we do with our lower grades and some of our middle schools. So it will look completely different.
Can I ask one more question before the board does their final? Andy, Mr. Graff, do we need, do we just need to vote that we will retest? Does the board need to be in the weeds of when and how? Or can we just vote to retest and let us work with schools to determine how?
Sure. If the board were to approve tonight a summer program, that's what the state needs to hear, is that the board approved a summer program. And the board knows that that summer program has to conclude before the end of the accountability window, right, which is July 6th.
So I'm just wondering, because again, the, the thing is, how do we work with each school to make sure that their plan is what is best for students, best for staff? And that could look different. I mean, is there only one way to do it? Or could it be, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, individual.
I mean, yeah, no, is there, there is, there is requirement by the state. You have to have at least one day of remediation. And due to the testing timeframe needed, you need at least two days of testing. So, you know, we get to decide what to do after that, right? The constraints we work within is what days are teachers actually employed?
Yep, transportation.
Right? And transportation, child nutrition, and when do we actually get children? What, like, what, you know, how likely are we to get children two weeks after the school year ends? Probably less likely than we are the week after school ends. So that's the constraint that you all have to consider as you make the decision.
Yeah. I wanted to add, a lot of students, once school is out, they're gone for the summer to live with mom or dad or, you know, grandparent. They've gone on vacation. So our numbers are going to be a lot lower than if we do it immediately at the, at the end of school.
But also, there's been some history of us doing retesting after school ended, where we had quote summer school, where we've had remediation, where we've had credit recovery, where we've had those things that we have brought back, our quote, testing coordinator, et cetera, to make sure that happened during the summer school opportunity. Isn't that part of our history as well?
Sure. So, so that's a little different than what we're talking about here, right? Students say a, a senior who needs to finish up, they might do that over summer, they might take credit recovery, they might finish in July. None of that would be included in this year's accountability model. That's a little different than this, this retesting summer program.
Math one, biology, chemistry, we've, we've had opportunities for students to test after they left school. A lot of them came back for some quote type of summer experience. And at the end of that time, we did go back and retest.
That's correct. That would be, say, in the end of July or what have you. That's right. Again, slightly different than this summer program that the, the state calls it the summer program. Yeah.
Okay. So a motion has been made by Board Member Watts to do the retesting during the summer school. A second by Board Member Crowley. Discussion has been made. Any, any additional discussion? Okay. So all in favor for Board Member Watts' motion, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Motion fails.
So I'd like to make an alternative motion that we approve the retesting and have the staff determine when per each location.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Opposed? Okay, that is seven in favor, three opposed. Motion passes. Wait. No, wait. Six in favor, three opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. That ends our action items. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. We have three items for approval. First, consider approval of the January 10th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting minutes. Consider approval of the January 24th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting minutes. And consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve all three consent agenda items?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion from Vice Chair Bohannon, oh, Board Member Bar, and a second from Vice, Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, March 14th will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin, the section of our meeting, which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable Two viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.